Hello? Anyone? Hello? 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 Lindsay? What's the weather to be seen? I see that library board just saw that. You're on mute. Demute your phone. Let's see. Hello? 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 Hello, hello, hello.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
I can, yes. I don't know if the if the boardroom can.
Oh, okay. Thanks. You and I caught the cold at the same time.
I guess so.
I had a flu shot and I got sick from it.
Oh, man, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
I'm on the recovering end, but I did test negative for COVID, so that's good.
Oh, okay. Good, good, good.
Boardroom, we can't hear you. Is there is there going to be any volume that way?
I don't hear the boardroom.
I don't either.
Can you hear us? Can you hear? Can you hear?
We can now. We can now. Thank you.
Okay, they can. Yeah, they hear us now. All right, we probably put ourselves on mute. And now we're back. We're back.
All right, so we are I think we're all here. Supervisor Ryan, are you here with us too? I see you on the virtual world.
Yeah. You know something? I came, I'm in the boardroom. Did you guys not come in because I came in? What's going on here?
No, he's physically present. There's probably a difference, but he's physically present in the board.
And literally, yeah.
With the camera, I could barely see you in there, so I just saw you come up on the on the virtual. There you go. All right. Well, it really was because I'm getting over a cold and I really didn't want to get anybody else sick, so that's why I decided to stay home.
I found, for me, for me, I found out Matt's coming, so I decided to come online.
All right, so I guess we go into, we can go straight into executive session once we do go into Flood Control District. Is that correct? Okay, so executive session at Flood Control District, we're so to ARS thirty eight.
Don't we, I think we need to do, Haranima, I think we need to call to order. Just so everybody knows we're here.
Ah, yeah, sorry, sorry. Jumping ahead. Okay, call to order. We may have a motion to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors.
Patrice Horstman, District One, present.
Herona Vasquez, District Two, present.
Wait, wait, can we go ahead for the record, please? And state who's here for the record on the board? District One, Patrice Horstman, present.
District Two, Herona Movaskas, present. District Three.
That would be me, District Three.
Thank you.
Yeah, Matt Ryan here.
District Board Judy Begay, present.
Thank you.
This is Lena, I'm here.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Now that we've established a call to order, the Board of Supervisors resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. May have a motion to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Begay and a second by Supervisor Ryan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, so now do we need, we do need to make a motion to go into executive session? Is that accurate?
So moved. Oh, wait, wait. At this point, I'm going to ask a question, the magic question. We do have legal counsel available here from the Flood Control District. So I think it's appropriate to ask whether there is a recommendation from legal counsel. Go into executive session for advice from legal counsel.
Thank you Supervisor Horstman. Do we have legal counsel?
Yes, yes, Chair Vasquez. We would recommend that you adjourn into executive session at this time.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
And with that recommendation, I would make the motion that we resolve in executive session to receive advice from legal counsel.
I'll second the motion, Matt Ryan.
We have a motion by Supervisor Horstman and a second by Supervisor Ryan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we will now go into executive session. Please be sure to take, get off, check off the Zoom if you're virtually and get on via Teams. We'll see you in executive session. Thank you.
Hello? 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 Hello?
Good evening, everyone. Sorry about the delay. I was having a hard time getting online.
We hear you, Hieronymo. So let's, I'm gonna ask everybody here to get ready for the meeting to start. Can we get ready to the meeting to start? Folks, let's get ready. All right, Hieronymo. I think we're ready. I know Judy's on. I don't see Alina. Hopefully she'll be coming down. But otherwise, you've got Matt, myself, Judy's on, and you.
Okay, let's go ahead and do a quick call to order, and then we'll go ahead and resolve as the Flood Control Board of Directors. So District One.
Present, Patrice Horstman. Good evening, everyone. It's good to be here.
Thank you. District Two, Hieronymo Vasquez. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. District Three.
Matt Ryan here. Hello, Hieronymo.
Hello, thank you. District Four. Supervisor Begay, are you with us?
She was on just a few minutes ago. I'll text her. I don't know what happened.
Okay, and just to keep things moving, District Five.
Here, thank you.
Thank you. Do we know if, thank you Supervisor Fowler, do we know if Vice Chair Begay is online or not?
She's online. Maybe she just needs to unmute.
Vice Chair Begay, could you please unmute? Okay, the interested time when you can, online, please unmute and let us know, or put in the chat that you're present.
If I may, I know I think we're still member, Flood Control District, is that correct, Chair?
Yes, first, we do need a motion to resolve, the Flood Control Board of Directors need to resolve as the Board of Supervisors. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion by Supervisor Horstman, second by Supervisor Ryan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So we did do our call to order already. We're still waiting on Supervisor Vice Chair Begay to join us, or at least to acknowledge that she's present. In the meantime, just a reminder, if you're carrying a cellphone, computer, two-way radio, or other sound device, please silence it to minimize disruption in the meeting. I won't have us go through and introduce ourselves again since we just did that, but it is now time for the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand and join me in the pledge. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we will now have call to the public to allow for any comments from the public. Please note that issues presented during the call to the public are not on the, that are not on the agenda cannot be acted upon by the Board of Supervisors. For items not on the agenda, individual supervisors may ask questions of the public, but are prohibited by open meeting law from discussing or considering the item. Individuals are limited to three minutes for their comments. We will take public comments from those in the room first, and then public comments from those who have joined virtually. Clerk Daly will explain how the public can provide comment. Clerk Daly? I'm not hearing anything from the boardroom currently.
We've had some technical issues. Lindsay's getting, getting, oh, you've got one now. Mike?
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. I had to switch to different microphone.
Not a problem, thank you.
If you are here in person would like to provide a public comment, you can fill out a comment form that is at our table near the front doorway, or you can come up to the podium and provide a comment at the podium. If you've joined virtually, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. All right. Right now, we don't have any hands raised. Again, if you're virtual, you can hit the raise hand icon that will appear at the bottom of your screen, and that will raise your hand. You've joined by telephone, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand. There are no hands raised, Chair Vasquez.
Okay, thank you. If there's no public comment at this time, we will move on to our consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by a single motion. Are there any items that board members want to consider separately?
Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Horstman.
Hearing, no one wanting to remove an item from the consent agenda. At this time, I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda, items two through 10, as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Horstman. Can I get a second?
Second motion.
Second.
Thank you. Second by Supervisor Ryan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you. Now, may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Equalization?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chair Begay. Can I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Supervisor Ryan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you. Now, we have a Board of Equalization action item, consideration of possible action to approve Board of Equalization Resolution 2023-02, receiving and accepting the hearing officer's decision for petition for the review of notice of change for parcel number 401-72-003, account number R0037888, tax year 2024, hearing conducted November 3, 2023. Clerk Daly, can you please present?
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. I would just like to note, too, that our hearing officer, Mr. Chuck Johnson, is here virtually in the meeting, as well as our Board of Equalization attorney, Rose Winkler. So they are also in the meeting as well.
Great, thank you.
Each year, the Assessors' Office sends out a notice of change to property owners, and so that just occurred. They did it by September 30, which is all outlined by statute, and they have the opportunity to appeal to the Board of Equalization. The difference from the other appeals that we go through is that this is appealed straight to the Board of Equalization. There's no appeal process with the Assessors' Office. So our timeline for this is pretty short. As far as we're their next round of appeal, not the Assessors Office. We actually only had one appeal this year, so they've been dwindling down over the years. And we did hold the hearing on November, I'm sorry, October 17, it was, sorry. Let me see here, November 3. So we had the hearing with our Hearing Officer on November 3. And our petitioner elected to do the hearing virtually via Zoom, so we did have the hearing. The Assessors Office, of course, was there and presented, as well as the petitioner. And what ended up happening is the petitioner presented their reason for appeal, and the Hearing Officer noted that there was not enough evidence, and the burden of proof is on the petitioner to justify what they think the value should be. Let's see. And as you know, the petitioner can also, if they're not satisfied with the Hearing Officer's decision, the petitioner can also appeal it to tax court. So there is an opportunity after this for them to appeal to tax court as well. That's all I have on the, on this case. And I do have the amount here listed. So the Hearing Officer's decision during the, after the hearing was for a no change to the valuation, which was the recommendation from the Assessors Office. So the Assessors Office provided a workup that was, that was presented at the hearing as well. And so the no change left the value remaining at $1,439,764. And then the limited property value at $823,833. And in your packet, you will see all the paperwork that was presented during the hearing, that was presented by the petitioner, as well as the Assessors Office for the case.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from board members?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Ryan, please.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, you know, I really need legal advice. I hear Rose Winkler's out there, our attorney. And I was hoping, Rose, you know, if, do I have the opportunity to change these values, or what is the role of the Board of Supervisors in this case?
Thank you, Chair Person Vasquez, members of the board. Yes, as part of board policy, as well as state statute, the Board does not have the ability to substitute its judgment for the Hearing Officer that it hired to conduct these hearings and hear the evidence. And so instead, the Board's review is very much limited to what the Hearing Officer has found. Only if the Board today were presented with substantial evidence that there were deficiencies in the process, or that there was no evidence to support the Hearing Officer's decision, only then would the Board of Equalization have any ability to make any changes. But based on what the Board has been presented with, and no additional evidence being presented today, you know, raising substantial questions about what was presented, the Board's review today is limited to adopting the Hearing Officer's decisions.
All right, that's sound legal advice. Thank you, Rose. And actually, and I'll note, we haven't seen anybody here in the chambers either to contest the process.
I will note, too, that we did provide Mr. Schneider a notice that this was going to be considered tonight for the Board of Equalization to confirm the decision of the Hearing Officer and approve it. And he did not come for the hearing to protest any of the due process in the, in the hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Horstman.
And so if I can ask legal counsel, then, based on the information as presented to you, have you seen any deficiencies in the process and the way this matter has proceeded with the petition, as well as the Hearing Officer's review on this?
No, members of the board, I reviewed everything that is also in front of you and found no deficiencies either as to the process, or, you know, regarding the evidence that was before the Hearing Officer.
Thank you. I know this is in Supervisor Ryan's district, Chair, so maybe he may want to make a motion.
Sure, Supervisor Ryan, would you like to make a motion on this, on this action item?
Well, sure, Mr. Chair. I sure can. So let me make sure I'm on the correct item. Because I am on the correct item. I move that we approve the Board of Equalization Resolution 2023-02, receiving and accepting Hearing Officer's decision for petition for review of notice of change for parcel number 401-72-003. That's account number R0037888. And that's the tax year 2024. And the hearing was conducted on November 3, 2023. That's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Ryan. Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
Second by Supervisor Horstman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, has Supervisor, Vice Chair Begay joined us, or is it still just the four of us?
Chair Vasquez, she is on, yeah, she's on by telephone.
Okay, just trying to make sure and confirm. And did we get her vote as well?
Yes, she made the motion. Seconded the motion, I'm sorry.
I mistaken that for you, Supervisor Horstman. I thought you did the second. All right. Well, thank you, Vice Chair Begay. So now we need a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chair, we need to call for the vote.
Oh, I thought we did the vote already. Okay, can we get a vote then for the motion?
Did we?
I think we did. And I think I screwed you up because you did make the motion. I did second it. And then we voted, and we did hear from Supervisor.
Oh, yes, we did. I'm so sorry, Mr. Chair.
I apologize.
I've just been going to.
I'm just glad I'm not the one that's fumbling through this by myself. It's a group effort. Collectively, we're fumbling through this. All right. Thank you. In that case, can I get a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors? Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you.
It was good to see you, Rose.
Yes, thank you, Rose.
Good to see you, you too.
Thank you. All right, next up, let's see. May I have a motion to resolve as the Health District Board of Directors?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Horstman, a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you. There are two items on the Public Health District Consent Agenda. Do any members want to separate these items?
Not seeing anybody in the room here, Mr. Chair.
All right, in that case, may I have a motion to approve the Health District Consent Agenda Items 12 and 13?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Begay, and a second by Supervisor Ryan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you. Now, may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Thank you, Supervisor Horstman. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you. Next, we're on item 14, Presentation and Discussion Regarding the Update on the Military Installation Sustainability Grant Deliverables. Community Development Director Jay Christelman will present.
Mr. Chair and Supervisors, good evening. Jay Christelman, Community Development. I'd like to take just a moment to congratulate Corbin Carroll, our first ever Rookie of the Year for the Diamondbacks. That said, we are here. We are here to discuss the deliverables from the Military Installation Sustainability Grant that is awarded through the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation, which is, of course, a Department of Defense office. And they have many grant opportunities. They were the ones that awarded us the Joint Land Use Study Grant, but they were called the Office of Economic Adjustment back then. They do like to change their acronyms frequently. You might notice that some of this slide presentation looks familiar. It's a recycled version of one that Gregory put together for Supervisor Ryan for a repi presentation that he gave, and we've been using it for JLS, MIS, and repi purposes because he did such a good job putting it together. It's a little bit of the background. So the Joint Land Use Study was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in, it was the spring of 2019, as an amendment to our comprehensive plan. And what it does is it provides for coordinated efforts between compatible development and protecting the mission of our installations, one of which is Camp Navajo, and the other one is the Naval Observatory Flagstaff Station, which also includes the interferometer at Anderson Mesa. Some of the assets that we are operating to protect through these grants are, of course, the military installation missions. Dark Skies, for example, partnerships with our various stakeholders, Forest Service, state land, game and fish, among others. The economic impacts, county planning documents. Like I mentioned, the Board of Supervisors adopted the Joint Land Use Study as an amendment to our comprehensive plan, so we treat it as as an ordinance, or, excuse me, as an area plan, and use its recommendations for our land use decision-making. It's protection of wildlife corridors and open space to ensure climate resiliency so that the missions of the installations are not impacted, and of course, to promote recreation. I've said it a couple times now, but because the Board did adopt the Joint Land Use Study as an amendment to our comprehensive plan, we were right at the top of the list for the follow-up grant, which at the time was called the JLS Implementation Grant. During the process of being awarded, it changed the name to Military Installation Sustainability Grant. So that was essentially all of the implementation elements that came out of the Joint Land Use Study were written into this MIS grant, and we were awarded the entire thing for approximately $920,000. We just finished the grant about two weeks ago. The financial report is not complete yet, but for all intents and purposes, all of the deliverables have been completed. Now, we'll get into the deliverables. This is a tremendous amount of information to put on one slide. It is all available on our website. I'm happy to explain them any, any further, but the big, the first heavy lift was a GIS-based, non-compliant database with an accompanying sustainability plan and after-action report. So if you remember about a year ago, at a joint city council and county Board of Supervisors joint meeting, we had our Contractor Matrix design actually give a presentation and a demonstration on this database. We have a Dark Sky compliance specialist who's half-funded by the county and half-funded by the city. This is a tool, her name is Janice Harkola, and this is a tool that she and former Dark Sky Specialist Mark Stento use to track non-compliant lighting within the county. Now, the after-action report and the sustainability planner are just that, they are to ensure that the sustainability of the database lives on regardless of who's in that role. Since it is a, it's a very specialized role, there's only one person that does it. If that person were to leave, these documents are the how, what, why, where, and when of why we do this and how you do it. It's a web-based app. It's actually really, it's really neat.
Was there a question there? We didn't hear the comment in virtual world.
That is true. And there is another picture in here that does not have you in it either. It's been a more recent picture. This was from our tour just a few weeks ago.
You know, I'm sure we can Photoshop you in.
I was gonna make a terrible joke, so I'll go ahead and say it publicly. We, I actually gave direction to Jay to make it look a bit nicer. Holy cow. Thank you, Eddie. So another element that came out of it was some very nice trifold Dark Sky promoting brochures, one for residential and one for commercial. We've distributed those brochures all over the case, all over the place. And most recently, we've partnered with Dark Sky Brewing. They distribute the documents for us at the First Friday Art Walk, so that's something that we're working on with them as well. Of course, there's the Protection of Wildlife Corridors, I mentioned earlier. I got a couple of these out of order here, but I'll just go, I'll segment them. Compatible Industry Fizibility Study and the Target Industry Market Analysis. These are two very robust documents. They're both well over 100 pages of data. What they essentially do is identify opportunities or barriers, favored versus disfavored facilities. There's quite an interesting ranking system that prioritizes more compatible uses versus less compatible uses. It's got a lot of information on our local workforce demographic, housing availability, et cetera. It's a great document for economic development person. As a matter of fact, Jay Smith and Chris Pasters were very instrumental in helping us create these documents. And as soon as Chris Pastor's shoes are filled, I will be going over these documents with the new economic development individual. Developers, the installation commanders, this is all very good information for compatible uses on and around our installations as far as economic development opportunities. That was a big part of the implementation for the Joint Land Use Study. Before I move on to next steps, are there any questions?
Yeah, just a note, Jay, and I'm making the assumption that this data that's been gathered is very useful to be putting into the comprehensive plan that we're putting together right now.
Supervisor Ryan, that's correct. Yeah, I distributed fairly recently when it was completed to Melissa Shaw, actually, who has been reviewing it. So the results is a pretty busy slide. Just a couple of screenshots from some of the programs we're looking at, but we did put, about two weeks ago when the grant was completed, we put all of it up on the website, as well as a hot button, quick link for our homepage. So it is, all of it is available to the public. We will cross-link it to the economic development side of things, just because so much of it is, is really promoting compatible use on and around our installations. So the next steps that we've been in discussions with in these last few months, there's a relatively new program through the old CC. It's the office nickname we give it. It's called the Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program. So this is a program that's new. It came out last year for the first time. What we're hearing from our colleagues in the, you know, that represent the military is that it is going to be a permanent program, and it's going to be more financially stable. So more than 100 million. We don't know what that's going to look like, obviously. But this is, this is an opportunity for tangible, real, hands-on shovel-in-the-ground construction projects. So we're working, we had a meeting with the Navy and the National Guard yesterday to try to identify some of these programs. They have to be pre-engineered or otherwise shovel-ready within 12 months. That's been our biggest holdup so far, because the project funds cannot go towards engineering. So we're actively working on trying to figure out what we can apply for. And I'll get into examples in a minute, but our new program manager from the old CC and our previous community planning liaison officer with the Navy, who has since promoted, they're both coming to town on Thursday. They're visiting us in our office, as well as a Camp Navajo tour. And then they're doing their own Navy Observatory tour later in the day. But this is, this is what we're here to talk about. What is the next thing that we get to go after? What we have found out about this decent program is in FY23, again, I think it was the first year of the program because it's a pilot, there was $100 million allocated for the entire program. They had 108 proposals. So only 17 of those were awarded. It's a very competitive grant. The average seems to be about 3 to 7 million being awarded. Schools, fire stations, and utility infrastructure projects were the Schools, fire stations, and utility infrastructure projects were the top successful awards that were granted. Initial thoughts, some of this has changed since I put the PowerPoint together from the meeting that we had yesterday. But water infrastructure to the Naval Observatory Flagstaff Station, they haul their water. I think their civilian astronomer told me it's $12,000 a month that they, that they haul water. Their whole fire suppression system is hauled water. And so we're thinking, well, maybe, maybe we could get to a water system. The Belmont Fire Station is currently undergoing an expansion. So we missed out on that opportunity, not knowing this program existed when they were doing that. But one of the, one of the items that came up yesterday was Flagstaff Fire Station Number One. It's on Thompson and 66. That's actually the fire station that would respond to an event or an emergency, I should say, at NOPS. So I'll be reaching out to them. There's a lot of initial discussions of, okay, we're getting some contacts for the Forest Service because we found out now, okay, maybe we can use this for forest thinning and fuels reduction. So again, it's pretty new. We've just been talking about it for the last few months and trying to figure out what we can go after. Any questions?
Just a comment, Jay. And that's great. I'm, you know, I'm glad you guys, you took a look at it. The drawback that we run into is each of them don't have engineering done for their projects. So, but you know, patience and working together, maybe we'll have that opportunity if not this year or in the future. But the other one that has always been on the implementation list is Sentinel Landscapes, where a lot of the federal money is going. That will take a more coordinated effort of multiple agencies to do it. But I encourage you guys to continue to keep that, you know, it is in the implementation plan. That may be even a better venue for a lot of the funding. This is a great one, and I'm glad you're pursuing it as well. But just keep that conversation going.
I've got it written down. Thank you Supervisor Ryan.
I've only mentioned it once or twice over the past so many years, you know. And this, just for the words, I mean, for anybody's edification, this is Sentinel Landscapes. It is a federal designation. It creates a planning area with multiple agencies. And it's a very useful tool. Money can go to help with some of the forest efforts, industry potential, many different options associated with it. That's Sentinel Landscapes. We also have Centennial Forest, which is under School of Forestry and NAU. And so, but people get them confused. Sentinel Landscapes is the federal program. So, thanks, Jay.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. I did, I was aware that there are some 60% drawings for a new interchange out by the Belmont area. Call it Ryan Interchange, but anyway.
I got a, I got a roundabout that they already named after me. In Athiti, you know.
A little out of our price range for this program.
Well, that's good. I'm glad.
So here's one of those other new pictures that we mentioned with Supervisor Fowler and Captain Lee walking there. Of course, there's Andy. Some other of us that took the tour a few weeks ago. But you know, the MIS so far has provided us, and this is just the beginning. We just now have the deliverables that now we get to use for inevitably. It does provide obviously a military benefit and economic development, environmental benefit. We do find out that there could be forest restoration opportunities and most definitely future grant opportunities. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jay. Are there any questions from board members? Or comments?
If I may, just, you know, I want to, I want to thank Jay for all his work that he's done over the years on this and the board and their support of everything that we've worked together on. I, you know, I will overlook that slight by Andy. You know, I noticed you're in the picture there, Andy. But, but this is a wonderful relationship we have. It's great that it's in our plans to continue to keep that coordination. You understand how important these facilities are, both Camp Navajo, but particularly the Naval Observatory and what it means strategically as well as, you know, world economics. So, you know, it's, it's important. I'm glad we're all working together. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. Are there any other comment, questions or comments from board members?
If I may, just real briefly here, Chair.
Supervisor Horseman.
And I also want to acknowledge the great work Jay you've done on this and that the staff has done on this. I know that this has been very important for Kokona County and as you've indicated, for some important military installations here in Kokona County. But I also think we'd be remiss not to acknowledge the great work that Supervisor Ryan has done for many, many years on this. And I know many years ago, when I was even thinking about running and I attended a J-Loose community meeting and Supervisor Ryan, of course, was leading that meeting and carrying on the great work on these projects and on these grants. And I just think we need to applaud the great work he has done. We're certainly going to miss his input, but your words of wisdom will remain. So thank you Supervisor Ryan.
Thank you, Petrice. Thank you.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Horseman. Appreciate that. Definitely appreciate you Supervisor Ryan and all your work. And you will be missed and we will hope to continue the work as you've helped lay the foundation for. So thank you. Are there any other comments by supervisors? I see Supervisor Fowler.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. This, this work is recognized throughout the country. And just want to recognize Supervisor Ryan for working, bringing, being able to bring everyone together and to say, this is very important to educate the rest of the board and working with the staff and just really carrying it to this point where it is now being, you know, being recognized by other counties who want to know how we're doing this work. Want to find out how, how we've been able to accomplish this. And I think it's just, and it sounds like it's just this, but we have the Loaf Observatory. We also have Camp Navajo. We're working with two militaries, the Navy as well as the Army. And we are, these are essential services for us as individuals. That's how far it goes. Individuals, GPS to just our time. This is where it comes from. It is a critical work. Now, we did not know that until Supervisor Ryan really started bringing this together and saying how, how, how important this is. And in the process really educated us. And I just want to thank you, Jay, and your staff and Parks and Recreation and other departments, a collective effort. And to be able to J-Loose, we just say J-Loose, but there are many partners. It's a community partnership, not just within that limited community, but it's all across Northern Arizona. I just want to just recognize the work that has been done in that. And then it's all in phases also. So it's not just, you know, it's not just one project. We've had all these different phases through this whole process. So I just want to just thank everyone. And I was very honored to represent Supervisor Ryan and Hawaii and presenting at the Hawaii Counties Association. They requested us to be there and was able to, you know, just deliver a presentation and be able to see their representatives, potential representatives also. So just want to thank you Supervisor Ryan on your efforts. And then the staff were just recognizing and being able to secure, go after these grants to make it even taken even further. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler.
Andy wanted to comment.
Yeah. Wanted to say also in working with our government affairs team. And so thank you Gregory for putting the structure of the presentation together. And we can continue to work with our federal advocates as well as it relates to funding opportunities going forward. Also with the relationships that we're building with the military installations, whether it be Camp Navajo or the Naval Observatory or any of our military installations. And having that partnership is so important and we're going to, we will continue to work to build those partnerships. I will say in the building of the City of Flagstaff new Public Works Facility and the lighting for that facility, in reference to this grant, we were able to secure some funding to build appropriate lighting at that facility as well. So it's just all of the smaller conversations add up to something bigger, even in our open space preservation efforts, our land planning efforts with so many departments involved. But Gregory wanted me to note that we'll continue to work for federal advocates as well as funding opportunities.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if I could follow just for a second. When I was sitting on the Governor's Military Affairs Committee, when that lighting piece came through, oh boy, we had a battle with Davis Mathen. They wanted all the money that the whole state would get. Fortunately, we were supported by the rest of the state to get that money. But it was a well-designed project that gave consideration for it. And, you know, I think the most important thing is just what you're all saying. It's everybody working together, which is important. And no apologies for levity. Levity keeps us real, Andy. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. Vice Chair Bagay, I see you've been trying to, to comment.
I just have one question for on that Ryan Supervisor.
Uh-oh.
Are you, are you going to be able to do some consultant work for us? To keep us in line and to be ears and eyes for us? I just want to say thank you. Thank you so much, you know, for being on the board for a long, long time. And, you know, basically, you know, looking at things and, you know, kind of starting projects up with your colleagues. And, you know, still to this day, you're helping all of us. And so I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate it. And, and then also all the staff, you know, I see a lot of things that came to fruition as far as projects that were little small talk in the talks. And then yet, you know, it's got so big and we see things are developing. And funds are just coming to us, you know, and it's just like, I'm so, I'm really, really proud of the staff and the leadership there as well. So I just want to say thank you so much, you know. And it's going to take a group and, you know, everyone to, you know, put in their thoughts and then also to work together to make things happen. So I just want to thank you again, all you all, whoever's, you know, had some say-so in the projects that are developing. And, you know, we're looking for more funds, you know, for more project with both project priorities that we have. So I just wanted to ask my colleagues, you know, that it's going to take all of us plus all administration and others, you know, our staff, you know, to do that. So, and, and so I just want to say thank you so much, you know, just, just listening to everything. I always say, you know, we have such a good staff, you know, they pretty much, you know, are doing a lot of work for us. And sometimes they're ahead of us and, you know, we just get informed and, you know, those are things that, you know, are some of the emergencies that come up, you know, they're already on task and stuff like that. So just again, thank you so much. And I'm proud to be a board member of the Kokona County. So just say thank you so much to everyone.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you Judy.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Supervisor Board. I'd like to personally thank Supervisor Ryan. He is the impetus for all of this. And the fact that we went after the original Joint Land Use Study Funds. And it's just, it's really opened the door with the old CC to continue working with them.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for item number 14? Okay, thank you. Next up, item 15, Presentation to Update and Discussion on the Progress and Status of the County's Required Ten-Year Update to the Comprehensive Plan and the Schedule of the Plan. And we have Long Range Planner Melissa Shaw to present.
Good evening, Chair Vascos and Supervisors. I am not Melissa Shaw. I am Jess McNeely, the Assistant Director of Community Development and the Planning Manager. And I just left a regional plan committee meeting as, as the county representative at that meeting to rush over and stand in for Melissa to give, to give this presentation. So Melissa did a great job putting together a packet for you. She had a very detailed report. And I will try to hit on some of those, on some of those details, but I'm sure it prepped our discussion. We, we want to give you an update and we want to have a little discussion on a couple of items when it comes to this, this multi-year process of the 10-year update to our comprehensive plan. So Melissa does apologize. She couldn't be with us this evening. She had some family she, she had to attend to. So we are fortunate to have a deep enough team that we have some redundancy and certainly can cover for each other. So here's a beautiful copy of our current comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2015 and won an award at the Arizona APA Conference in 2016. As you all well know, state statute requires us to update the comprehensive plan every 10 years, which is a great requirement. And state statute also has some parameters, some minimum requirements for public engagement. With that, we created, we drafted for you all what we call P3, Public Participation Plan, the Public Engagement Plan for updating this comprehensive plan. The last time we spoke on the comprehensive plan, the last time we collectively gave you an update was when you approved the P3, the Public Participation Plan to update the comprehensive plan. I realize we say the word plan a lot and that gets confusing. But when you approved that, adopted that back in May, was the last time we collectively updated the board on, on the comprehensive plan update process. So we're very happy with the P3. We're glad we had input, valuable input from the board. Some tweaks actually to the public participation plan that, that I will point out. Since we're giving Supervisor Ryan lots of accolades, Supervisor Ryan had some very direct, good input to our public participation plan. We, we took that direction. That was great direction and, and made some improvements to what staff had originally drafted and you all adopted that in May. We've been quite busy since May and many of you all have seen us at, at the county fair, at the, at the Navajo Nation Fair in Tuba City, at Friday Art Walk, at focus groups in each of your districts. And some of you have been able to participate in some of the, some of the focus groups as well. So you know, we've been busy. We created a logo. That's what you see on the left-hand side of the screen right there. We call it Envision 2045. We anticipate having the comprehensive plan update adopted in 2025. And that plan looks out for 20 years, the 20-year outlook plan, which is why we call it Envision 2045. And on the right-hand side of the screen, you see a great map that GIS assisted us in developing that helps people understand our county and helps understand planning in our county. You see clearly on there, what is the Navajo Nation? What is, what are Hopi lands? What are the other indigenous peoples' lands? What is national forest? What falls under our, our 10 area plans that are very important? What falls within that perfect little blue rectangle around the City of Flagstaff? That is the Flagstaff Regional Plan that we are updating right now also. So this map really helps us engage with people when we talk about our county, the geography, the land ownership of our county, and, and how the different plans interact, work with each other. I like to call it the nesting of plans. They are all holistically supportive and mutually supporting in working together. And I believe several of the supervisors are anxious, I wouldn't say anxious, but encouraging us to get this plan updated so we can go out and update more of those area plans out in your districts. so we can go out and update more of those area plans out in your districts. And and this will drive that that update process. Those those area plans are amendments to the comprehensive plan, just as the the J List that Jay was just presenting on is also an amendment to our comprehensive plan. So we'd like to see the comprehensive plan as kind of the lead vision and community values policy document. And then that, when that's updated every 10 years, that can drive other updates. So as we discussed in your P3 that you adopted, we have several update teams and structures. And several of them are already engaging and doing work. The first one is the core planning team. That is, all county departments are represented, some by directors, such as Cynthia Nemeth joins us as part of the core planning team. And then some other departments send other people who tie in well to the comprehensive plan and goals and the policies and action items of the comprehensive plan. So the core planning team meets every month and has really been doing a lot of work. The core planning team will be the primary drafters of the comprehensive plan updates, the the drafters of those goals and policies. We are in the process of putting together a partner agency advisory group. This was done at the last comprehensive plan update as well. May have had a different name. But that will that will include many of our partner agencies such as Forest Service, NACOG, even some National Park Service connections. It's the partner agencies outside of the county organization that we will be getting input on this plan from from a more technical perspective. And then finally, as as we brief you in the in the P3, we will be putting together the comprehensive plan advisory group. It's recommended to be a 10-member group. It would be, those 10 members would be invited by you, the board supervisors. And we would put them together during Phase Two. We're currently still in Phase One of the comp plan update. And their job will be to review those those drafted goals, policies, indicators, and implementation priorities to get what staff drafts and get it ready for for public hearing ultimately.
Chair, can I ask a question on that?
Please do Supervisor Horstman.
Thanks. And when are you expecting that we're gonna get this 10-member group together invited as an advisor group for Phase Two?
Thank you, Chair Horstman and, excuse me, Chair Vascos and Supervisor Horstman. In the report that that we put together for you, we have a Gantt chart.
Okay.
Many of us in project management love the Gantt chart. And we really anticipate in Phase Two, getting getting the CPAG together at some point early next year. At some point next year, we'd anticipate possibly forming it sometime in the spring, perhaps.
Okay.
Once we have drafted goals and policies and implementation action items.
So then you'll be coming back to the board to ask for recommendations to be members of this sometime next spring, summer?
Yes, we would anticipate engaging for to get those recommendations at some point. Into when I start thinking quarters and we go into the third year quarters. But yeah, in next, in the next calendar year, we will probably be engaging with you by spring, if not by summer, to to discuss the process of those of those. We don't call them acquaintees. We call them they're invited.
Because I believe it or not, I have community members that are asking about this. So it's good to know. So thank you.
We know you've had a lot of community members engaged. I just came from the regional plan update committee, which included committee members that were invited by by you, the supervisors. All these focus groups that we've been doing, we know that we engaged with with you, the supervisors, to get good quality community leaders who know their communities to engage in those focus groups. Any other question, Chair Vascos, Supervisors?
No, please continue.
Okay. So how we have been reaching the county's communities and engaging with them. We have had some press releases, some and and certainly public affairs has assisted us with that. We did a big kickoff at the county fair. We have a website set up. We have an email list. We're we're over, we're well over 200 people on our email list at this point in time. We're doing a lot of data gathering to create what we call our community assessment reports. Those are, those are reports that we take out to each of the communities when we do focus group engagements to tell those communities what we know about them. And then we get input from them on those community assessment reports. The core planning team, all the departments across the county organization assisted in creating the those community assessment reports. So there's a lot of data in there that helps us as the county organization understand these various communities and helps those communities understand what what county assets and programs are available in their areas. And we anticipate holding on to these community assessment reports as we go into area plan updates and future county planning activities over the next 10 years. We've had focus group discussions. We want to get specific. We've had, we're on schedule right now for 17 focus group discussions. So we've engaged well over 130 people on focus group discussions and then intercept surveys. Intercept surveys are the surveys where we've been giving people at the county fair, at the at the Navajo Nation Fair in Tuba City, at the art walks, any place we can grab people, we do intercept surveys. So it's very point in time, very quick. We do it with a tablet or just on paper. And and that's where we've been getting some very valuable input. And on intercept surveys, we're upwards of about 170 intercept surveys. This is a copy of, or this is a screenshot and image of our of our update website, the website central to the comprehensive plan update in Vision 2045. And here's some pictures of us out engaging the community. We've even got CT, Christopher Tressler, to to help us out with with the comprehensive plan in in community engagement. We had a big wheel that we could ask trivia questions. People would spin the wheel and see which category they could ask or answer a trivia question about county county facts. And we have this great map, the map that I talked about, that we use to engage the community and and understand the land ownership and geography of the community. We we took that map and we cut it into a puzzle and kids love that thing. Yeah, so it's a great hands-on learning experience. Adults too. Some people, some people can't figure out that page and page in the Utah border. Took care of itself. You still hear me? Okay, well, we we would encourage you to to try your hand at the puzzle anytime you're by our department.
I was a little slow.
And we were happy to see many of you all out at those community engagement opportunities. So that's that's where we're at on community engagement and gathering gathering data in our process so far. We do have some slides and I know these were in your report. They kind of give you some indication of what we're hearing from people, what we heard from them in the intercept surveys. And then it's very consistent with what we're hearing from people in a in a longer conversation of the focus group interviews. Of the intercept surveys, you see the pie chart on the left, a little over half of our intercept surveys have included people who live in the unincorporated county, 54%. The bulk of the rest live in the City of Flagstaff. When we look at what locations within the county, those people have come from DPTF. Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood came out ahead as probably the largest, which population-wise, it is one of the larger unincorporated communities. But all of them are represented there. You see, we had people from Mount near Kachina Village Valley. You know, the population of the valley areas increasing, Valley on that chart right there is the second largest representation that we had on the intercept surveys. One of the first questions we ask them, are you familiar with the county's comprehensive plan? Amazingly to me, as a county planner, 64% of them are not. No, we know your average citizen, they're trying to live their lives. And we help educate them on how county's planning policies can translate into into things that can improve their lives. But bright side, glasses half full here, almost 36% are were familiar with the county's comprehensive plan. So actually, I was I was impressed with that statistic. When we ask people, what makes you excited about the future? We know that on the far left, they're 10%. Access to nature, open space, outdoor recreation is always a high one. Land and natural resource conservation and sustainability. But actually inclusivity and community building was one of the one of the areas that we were able to group a lot of answers in. That that actually came out just as high as as any other ones on on answer to the question, what makes you excited about the future? When we ask, what are the top three issues for the county to address in the next 20 years? We got a lot of consistency on this one. At the very top is housing and affordability. Okay? And and not far below that is water resources, both quality and availability. So these are the things that people are concerned with and and we're fully aware of it. I think housing affordability, housing accessibility and affordability is something that was addressed in our in 2015 comprehensive plan. I think we all know, you know, the City of Flagstaff has declared a housing emergency. We see it in the entire region. We know that our update to the comprehensive plan certainly will have a robust section addressing housing, housing accessibility, availability, and affordability. When we ask people if the county could do one thing to improve your community, what would it be? At the top of that list was roadway infrastructure and maintenance, but not far behind it was was addressing and creating affordable housing. We asked people their age group. I'm not sure if they're all always honest with it. But the the vast majority of those fell into the 26 to 65, pretty broad age group.
That's a pretty broad age group.
That was a broad age group. Yeah, I think I think our use of Survey Monkey there, we we could have done a little bit of quality control from what it what it gave us to work with. But 13, 13 and a half percent over 65 and almost 10% under 18. So we did get a good, a good distribution there. So with all of the input that we have been getting from the intercept interviews, just grabbing people at the fair or wherever we find them and from the focus groups, we feel that the one of the next things we could do to validate a lot of that information, people who are a little more self-selective, people who are people who were willing to answer our questions, people who are willing to serve in a focus group discussion, to validate what we've heard from those people, we would like to do what we call a statistically valid survey, a county-wide statistically valid survey that could verify what we see really as vision and community values. That's that's the focus of this Phase One portion of the update to the comprehensive plan. So wanted to let you know that that is one of the next things we are looking at doing. We actually have a request for proposals out to some professionals in the area for their response. They're due back this week. So we're gonna see how this can work in with our budget. So not asking you for a budget increase yet, however. Just letting you know that that is that is one way we anticipate using some of the budget that we have available to us for this comprehensive plan update. That detail was not in your P3. We did not just, we did not specify within the P3 that we would do a county-wide statistically valid survey. However, we are seeing that as being, we're getting such robust and such good feedback at this point in time, we would like to go ahead and confirm that feedback soon so that we can move forward on on updating the policies of the comprehensive plan. So this was one of the items that we really wanted to present to you and have discussion. So I would ask if there's any questions or any any discussion from any of the supervisors on this item, a county-wide survey.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Ryan?
Thank you. You know, we've used surveys quite well in many of our successful directions. You know, I'm at a loss for the appropriate words, but it it helps us with a much more informed approach to what we're doing. You know, examples, we've used them on the establishment of the jail district, on the various jail taxes. We used it with the transportation initiatives. We used it to create the Coconino Parks and Open Space Initiative. And the reason we were successful was it gave us a sense of what people are thinking and it brought us deeper into understanding that. And if we need to pivot a little bit, it's it's a way of informing us. So, you know, I think it's and we've used it on past, the past comprehensive plan, if I remember correctly, at least one before that. So, you know, I would encourage us to to do that.
I agree.
Any other questions or discussions?
I figured you could do cleanup.
I I will say this is an easy sell. So any other questions on the survey? Because then the last thing we wanted to talk to you about was schedule.
Yes, I I think that what the approach that you're taking this year is much broader than we have done in the past. And I really like that. We're reaching out to communities that we have not ever reached out to and trying to seek their their input. And I'd like to see that continue. Any way that we can help help initiate that or make sure it's a success, please let us know. And this is a really good report as to where we are with this. We have quite a ways to go, but we can, you know, just initially, just your your outreach into the community has really, you know, it's been impressive. And and I know that you have asked when my regional meetings are. And so we're working, we'll be working on that and scheduling that. So that way we can survey our, you know, get input from people that normally do not get involved in it. So I really want to just just tell you how much I appreciate you all, Melissa. People are starting to get get to know Melissa out there now. So that's really good. And then I agree with the survey. I think we've used it in the past in various, you know, just really trying to find out where the community is. It's a really great way. And just making sure that we're asking the right question where it's understandable. Sometimes in the community, one question asked in the one community, another one will say, I don't know what that one is. So but they, well, I think that just having the survey done at the community level, I think it's really good. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler. Any other comments? In that case, please continue.
Thank you, Chair Vascos. The last thing we wanted to talk to you about was our schedule. So Melissa included in the report we gave you this very detailed Gantt chart that included putting together the advisory group that Supervisor Horstman asked about. So you see that plugged in starting in, gosh, starting in in the new year in January, going all the way through following September of 24. So this this Gantt chart that we've put, this schedule that we've put in your report is actually a little bit of a speed up, if you will, or moving up in in time from what we'd originally anticipated. And there's a couple of things we wanted to to let you know about and remind you of. First off, state statute and our own regulations require that we can only have public hearings to update the comprehensive plan, major amendments to the comprehensive plan, that includes updates once a year. Okay, so we have to pick a time that we establish that our existing comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinance set that that will be at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing in October every year. So we had originally planned this process out with a target of October of 25 that then would have a goal of getting it to you, the board, for final approval by the end of the year. That's pretty tight to get something. That's pretty tight, to get something to Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing and their recommendation in October and then to the Board of Supervisors by the end of the year. We are seeing with the input that we are getting at this point in time, likewise, we'll tell you that we support the city of Flagstaff with their regional plan update. We have a little bit of a conflict. I wouldn't say conflict, but there's some overlap. We are supporting as staff and really the entire community also is being engaged on both plans at the same time. We see easily, and I believe this schedule lays it out for you graphically, that we can accomplish the things that we need to do, certainly with the response we've had so far with public engagement to update our comprehensive plan and actually have it ready for public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission in October of '24. So that was what we would like to shoot for. If we can get their recommendation or at least open their public hearing in October '24 with a draft plan, we can get their input, make any changes based on their input if necessary, and then easily have plenty of time to bring it back to the Board of Supervisors for approval anytime within the calendar year of '25. So that hinge, kind of hinge pin, if you will, of October hearings every year is what we're trying to work around, but we see that this is a doable schedule. So wanted to get your, ask your questions and get your discussion on that.
Chair, if I can?
Please Supervisor Horstman.
All right, thank you. And what my question was going to be is the city's plan, regional plan, and what is their timeline? Is it the same as this? Is it different? You know, obviously it's just one of the municipalities, but it certainly is the largest municipality. So it's just, I'd love to know what their plan is.
Absolutely. Their plan is to use all of calendar year '25 for their public hearings with recommendation from their Planning and Zoning Commission. And then they have the goal also of having theirs adopted, approved by their city council in calendar year '25. But because the city of Flagstaff is well over 10,000 people, they are required by state statute to take their general plan.
Yeah, voters. When will it go to the voters? What's their plan?
I would have to go back. We can check that and get you in from.
Okay, I just am curious. But it's very, how you say, it's very, you're really going to have to move fast to get it done. You know, I love it. I think that's great that you're moving forward on it. And but it's, there's a lot of work to be done. I look at the comprehensive plan that we have from last time. It's, and I still refer to it quite a bit. It's an amazing plan, incredible amount of work, incredible amount of stakeholder input. So, you know, obviously if it gets delayed because we need to make it complete, I think that needs to be really the focus, more than the hurrying it to get it done. I'd like to make sure we get it complete. We have an input from all of our stakeholders and it can be something that we can be as proud of as the last one. So I love the timeline, but I also recognize it's a lot of work to get done between now and then. And my focus would be on making sure it's complete.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes Supervisor Ryan?
Yeah. You know, as I think of it, actually it's kind of interesting because usually it's somebody asking for, we need to continue further. So you just have me all messed up, Jess. And I say that with, you know, less seriousness. But I think the key piece, I understand you all have been working really hard also. And if you are moving well through this, it's a sensible piece, but it is that cautionary note. And one thing I hope, I hope that we do with this plan is a lot of times we get to a point of trying to replicate what we've had, but we have some tough challenges out there. You mentioned the housing piece. And how innovative, how flexible are we to those hard questions? And if those hard questions need more deliberation, that's the pause associated with it. By the same token, if you're progressing well and we are moving into that type of look at this, you know, it seems to be a sensible recommendation. But right now, this is one of the first plans that I'm sitting on that I'm not going to see done before I get out of here. So it'll be all up to you all. But I hope you really, you wrestle with those hard questions. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. Are there any other comments or questions? I'd just like to say thank you to the team for all your hard work and I look forward to seeing this plan develop as we move forward and get more community input. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board?
Get well, Mr. Chair. Get well, Judy.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you for the presentation. And if there's nothing else to discuss for tonight, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.